It is 6:30. I'm going to call the August 17th Northwood School Board meeting to open. The bills and manifests are going around. Can everyone that's here make sure that they sign in to the sheet that should be going around? Because it's gone, it was up there on the bookcase. So if everyone could just make sure they sign in, please. We're going to wait for the non-public session, or do we need one?
I don't think we need one.
Okay. And the book presentation is throughout here.
They should be coming in here. You want me to see if they're ready?
Yes. We're going to start tonight with 1,000 Books presentation for the kids that are entering into kindergarten, that have read 1,000 books before entering into kindergarten. So we're going to start with that presentation tonight, I believe they're coming in.
Thirsty.
Welcome, everyone. They can't hear me?
You can't hear back there.
Okay. I can't yell too much louder, but I'll try.
That's what they're doing, they're in essence speaking.
Oh, she's going to do the speaking.
It is on now.
Am I presenting them, or are they doing it? Okay. Hi. I'd like to thank the school board for having us here this evening to start with. We really appreciate it. I'd like to thank all of you for joining us to celebrate our second annual 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten celebration. We kicked off our program in January of 2015, where the 100 Books Before Club morphed it into the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. It's a joint project between the Chesley Memorial Library and Northwood School. And tonight, we're recognizing two groups of students, those who have, youth, those who have read their 1,000 books, and those entering kindergarten who participated. So we'll have them come up front when we call their names. Parents, you're welcome to come, too. So please join me in welcoming all of Northwood's newest batch of 1,000-book readers. So when I call your name, if you could come up. Jaden DeLuca? Ainsley Lennon? Ainsley Lennon here? Jake Lakeman? Okay. How about Ruth Lakeman at the same time? Is Connor Morales here? Or Jackson Morales? Kerry Morrell? Miles Newman? And Riley Newman? Yep, this is Myla Miles. Good job. Congratulations. Great job. This is Riley. And Gretchen Sawyer? Come on, Gretchen. Okay, children finishing up, entering kindergarten. Kinsley Audit? Grace Lambert? Rachel? Teterzak? Lucy Whedon? And Jocelyn Williams? And I guess none of them are here, but we'll congratulate them anyway. Congratulations to all of the kids. Great job. I'm just going to give them a minute to get out, move out. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by NEASC.
We have George Edwards here tonight, who is from NEASC, is part of the accreditation process. He's going to give us a brief overview of what the accreditation process looks like, and then any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the board for taking time out of their meeting today to have me do this presentation, and thank you to everyone that's here today. As superintendent said, my name is George Edwards, and I'm the Director of the Commission on Public Schools at the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. I'm also kind of a neighbor. I live in Concord, New Hampshire, and I've been a high school principal in New Hampshire for 21 years. So it's always nice when I get to spend time with New Hampshire school districts and help them in the accreditation process. So I gave you the low-tech version of my PowerPoint presentation. I thought that with the number of people that were here and all of the many important things you have on your agenda tonight, that low-tech would probably be quicker than high-tech. So I'm sorry that I don't have a copy for everyone in the audience, but I'll try to explain a little bit about the accreditation process. So basically, I thought to myself, you know, what would be the most important thing for me to present to the school board tonight? And I kind of broke it down into three things. The first thing is, who are we? Who is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges? The second thing is, what do we do? What is accreditation? And then the third thing is, why is it important? So what is it that the Northwood Elementary School and the Northwood community can benefit through the accreditation process? So first, the who are we? The New England Association of Schools and Colleges is the oldest educational accrediting association in the United States. We've been around for over 130 years. We accredit schools from pre-K all the way through college and university. And altogether, we have about 2,000 schools that we accredit, both in the six New England states and then also around the world. Our association is organized into four different commissions. And as I mentioned already, I represent the Commission on Public Schools. But in addition to our commission, we also have a commission on institutions of higher education. So institutions like the Community College System in New Hampshire, the University of New Hampshire, St. Anselms College, and others are accredited by our association. We have an independent school commission, and the independent school commission accredits independent schools throughout New England, including Cobrown, Northwood Academy. And then our final commission of the four is our International School Commission. We have about 350 international schools in about 70 different countries that we accredit through the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. So a little bit about our commission, our public school commission, we're led by a group of volunteers. And that group of volunteers, they're all practitioners, they're all working in schools throughout New England. They represent a lot of different types of positions, including school administrators, superintendents, but also teachers, guidance counselors. And we also have members of the public that serve on our commission as well, and they're the decision-making body for our organization. We have six professional staff members, one of whom is myself, and we're all former principals or superintendents. So we all have a background working in schools. We have a lot of different types of schools that we accredit in our public school commission, including not only elementary schools and middle schools, but also high schools and career and technical schools, like the Concord Regional Vocational Technical Center. We also have a lot of different configurations of schools that we accredit. So we accredit some middle high schools, we accredit K-8 schools like yours. We also accredit K-12 schools, like the Linwood School up in Lincoln Woodstock, New Hampshire. So a lot of different types of schools in addition to the traditional 9 through 12 high schools. And a lot of the work that we do is done by volunteers. Not only is our governing board a group of volunteers who are practitioners, but also the people who actually do the work on the ground, come into the schools and do the accreditation visits, are all volunteers as well. The accreditation process has a number of different components to it. Accreditation starts with schools working towards aligning their practices with research and best practices in education. So we have a process where we work with our members, and we work through research and through colleges and universities to identify what are the best practices in schools, and then we develop a set of standards that schools work towards implementing that are based on that research and best practice. There's also a reflection period. So we ask each schools to look at themselves through the lens of those standards, to see how they're doing, see how their practices are doing at reaching those research-based best practices. The next step in the accreditation process is what we call peer review. That's the actual accreditation visit, when a group of peer visitors will come to the school for three or four days, and they'll sit in on classes, they'll meet with parents and community members, they'll meet with teachers and administrators, and they'll learn just as much as they can about the school during that four-day period. And you'd be surprised how much they can learn. Our volunteers, as I said, over 1,500 volunteers a year. Over 82% of them say that participating in one of these accreditation visits is the best professional development that they have in their careers, because it really gives them an opportunity to see a school in action, and to be able to look at research and best practice and help schools improve. And then the final part of the process is the continuous improvement phase. So during this phase, schools get recommendations, and they also get commendations about the things that they're doing really well, that they should continue to do and build on, and about those things where they can improve. So that can then serve as the basis for a strategic plan or an improvement plan as the school moves forward. So why accreditation? Well, there are a couple of reasons that I would point out. And I'll say that from my own experience, being a high school principal, I worked in a number of different schools, all of them were accredited. And I really felt that the accreditation process really helped us to stay focused, to stay focused on research, on best practice, and honestly, to be focused on our children, and to really constantly be striving to do what's best for the students in our school. So one of the reasons why I would say accreditation is important is it's a time-tested process. We've been around, as I mentioned earlier, for a long time, over 130 years. The basic pillars of the process, self-reflection, peer review, and continuous improvement, have been part of that process for decades. And so it's a time-tested proven method. It's also, as I mentioned, research-based. Not only do we use research when we develop the standards, but we've also had researchers look at the process to really kind of do an accreditation visit on ourselves, and to give us suggestions on how to improve, and to look at the success of the process. So it's a research-based process. We continually are updating the process and trying to improve the process based on the feedback that we get. The process provides an impartial, independent, third-party set of eyes. And I think we can all appreciate the fact that sometimes we are working so hard, and we're doing the best job that we can, but it's important sometimes to get another set of eyes to look at the work we're doing, and to give us some good, critical feedback that will help us improve. And then the last thing I would mention is that it provides consistency through the educational continuum. So starting in kindergarten, working through eighth grade, aligning with the same accreditation process, or a very similar one that's being used at the high school that most of your students go to, and then right on into college and university. It's the same process with the same goals for schools. So it really provides consistency and connections throughout the educational continuum. So in this day and age, where we have so many people looking at our schools and trying to provide feedback, such as the state and the federal government with the testing programs that they ask us to do, we often get asked, why accreditation? Why is it important? Why doesn't the testing and the other things that we do, why doesn't that take the place of accreditation? And I'm sorry again that you can't see it, but I took your test results from the State Department of Education website. And the point of my doing that is not to actually look at the test results, but to look at what it tells you, but also what it doesn't tell you. So it gives you a number, and you can tell maybe from year to year if that number goes up or down, but it's still, it's a number. And that's contrasted by the next slide on the handout, which is just an excerpt from one of our letters that we sent to a school. This was an elementary school that had recently gone through the accreditation process. And I know it's really small writing, but if you look, what we've done in this is, we've given them much more than a test score. We've given them specific, targeted recommendations about how they can improve moving forward. And that's something that a test score really doesn't do for you. It doesn't give you any feedback or help that you can use to then improve as a school. So what are some of the benefits? The accreditation process ensures that schools have the capacity to meet the educational needs of their students. It provides a snapshot of current conditions in the school, and provides a blueprint for needed changes. It validates some of the work that you're doing now, by having a third-party impartial set of eyes take a look at it and give you feedback on it. And from the community perspective, it assists administrators and teachers to help continually improve the school. It assures students that their school is doing everything they can to meet their educational needs. It affirms the policies and the decisions that are being made by the school board to help guide the community and the values of the community. And it assures local citizens that the tax dollars that they're spending on the education for their children is supporting a 21st century school and a 21st century program. So that's a real high-level, quick overview of the accreditation process, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
We're going through the strategic planning process right now. Are we kind of like, is that something that's going to interfere, or should we wait till we finish the strategic plan, or do the accreditation process?
So one thing I didn't mention in my presentation is that I was here about a month ago, and I met with your administrative leadership team, and we worked on aligning the accreditation process with your strategic planning process. So it really is something that will work very complimentary to the process that you're already involved with. Wow, you're letting me off the hook tonight. I guess you have more important, more important and more pressing things to deal with, and I appreciate that. My dad was a school board member in the town where I grew up, and so I really appreciate the work that you do. And I want to thank you for what you do for your children here in Northwood, and I hope that we have the opportunity to work together.
Just one more question.
Yeah, yeah.
The timeline process. So if you said you're going along with the strategic plan process, we're supposed to be like March of 2018. Is that still in line with the accreditation process, or is it going to go longer?
The accreditation process will actually go longer than that, but one of the things that we talked about was how the accreditation process can actually provide you with feedback on the work that you do, the plans that you make, and the implementation of those plans during the strategic plan. So it will really provide you with kind of a feedback loop, so that as you develop the plans and implement the plans, accreditation can give you feedback on how well they're being implemented, and what further strategic changes need to be made in order to maximize the effectiveness of those strategic plans.
And how long is the process altogether?
So we accredit schools on a 10-year cycle. The process itself, once you're approved as a candidate school, you have three years to do the self-reflection and to host a visit. So it will give you time, not only to develop your strategic plan, but it'll also give you some time to implement it and to actually see what the results of it are.
So the basic timeframe we're looking at is to get the application in, in the mid-December range for consideration in January, and then beginning the process, the self-reflection process, with the NEASC visitation, probably somewhere in the vicinity of spring of 19 or fall of 20. No, fall of, spring of 19 or fall of 19, right in that, right in that range.
Great. Well, again, thank you very much for your time, and I hope you have a great opening of school. Enjoy the rest of summer.
Thank you.
We were talking about, there's not much summer left, is there?
It goes quick.
Thank you.
If the other two members present are okay, I'd like to move the transportation update to next.
Do you want to do opening public comment?
I was going to do the transportation update first, if that's okay, and then we can do the public comment after that. Are you guys okay with that?
I'm good.
Okay.
I actually have a statement that Tim wanted me to read in his absence. I don't know if it applies to the transportation update, so I don't know if I should do it during that or before it. I don't know what your preference is. It would be your call?
We could do it afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Dr. Kudonski, take over?
Yeah, I'll start off. This has been an ongoing process, and it's taken us three, four months to get to this point. Just for information for the people that are here, as well as the school board members, just want to remind you how we got to this. We had a three-year contract with Northwood Transportation to cover this. We had two years, and then this coming year was the third year of the contract. So it was, it was all set for three years. Northwood Transportation has defaulted on the contract, so they did not, are not providing us with the services that we originally anticipated. When that happened, we had a number of legal trials that we were doing that prolonged it a bit, and then we put an RFP out, a request for bids for proposals for providing services. We put that out far and wide to all of the bus companies in New Hampshire, and some from out of state, and we got no bids back. And for the most part, from what I, when I reached out to the companies, it was the lack of drivers. There are no drivers. The buses themselves, the equipment, the services, not a problem. But they didn't have the drivers to fulfill the contract, which was, was the basic sticking point. When we didn't get any bids back, I reached out again to some bus companies and asked them if they could provide any assistance at all, working through this, this situation. Dale Transportation, STA, was one of the people that stepped forward to try to help us solve the problem. And since then, everybody's been trying to solve the problem. The Dale Transportation, the school board, myself, the bus drivers, everybody's been working towards that. So, you know, my hat's off to everybody working through a very difficult situation. To try to hopefully retain and entice some of the Northwood Transportation drivers that were now looking for work, I brought a request to the school board to consider a $3,000 sign-on bonus as a way to, to help retain some of those drivers, as well as trying to demonstrate some, you know, our thanks for, for taking care of our kids. The school board decided to do that, and in the meantime, Dale Transportation has a $1,500 sign-on bonus for new drivers to them. Now, I think there was a little bit of confusion there, because naturally, when one organization, one bus company, has different signing bonuses that we want to try to put in there, it creates an issue for them, because they've got contracts with Barrington, Nottingham, Strafford, and obviously, you can't, in a company, you can't say, all right, you're getting this bonus, you're getting that bonus, you're getting something else. So it created a little bit of difficulty for them. So, you know, my hat's off to Dale Transportation to try to work through this with us. They've been working really hard with, with doing that. So we're, I think there was a little bit of confusion about that, that the drivers, I'm assuming there was a misunderstanding as far as the sign-on bonus was. So they, you know, they felt that, that the $4,500, $3,000 and $1,500 was what was originally discussed, and I think that that was a little bit of a misunderstanding and a confusing time. So I don't think it was anybody's fault. Certainly, you know, I don't think the bus drivers, Dale Transportation, or the school board. I think everybody has been trying to step to the plate and get this done. So that's the long and short of it, where we're at. Right now, we don't have any transportation. We do have, I've spoken with Dale Transportation, and they've been agreeable for picking up the freshmen tomorrow for Cobrown. You know, we all thought that that was, we certainly don't want nervous freshmen worrying about one more thing on their first day of school. So, you know, that's been all taken care of. Where we're at right now, and this is what the discussion is going to be at the school board level, is I'm going to present the three options that I see right now to the school board. And, you know, option one is, I think that the school board, I would recommend that you have a discussion about covering the $4,500, or six routes. We need six drivers. We've got four possible from Northwood Transportation. We've got another two in training that's going to take another few weeks before they're ready to drive the bus. So if the, if the board would be interested in discussing the $4,500, I would work with Dale Transportation and offer that back to those drivers, and see if we can, can correct a misunderstanding, and perhaps solve the issue that way. That would allow us to get, if everybody decided to do it, that would allow us four drivers, which we could start the school year, modified routes, and then as those other two drivers become trained, late September, early October, readjust the routes again, so we have six, as six is full where we need it. So that would be option one, to have that discussion. The second option that I see is adjusting our school start time at the elementary level to 10 o'clock. What that does is, it allows transportation to be covered under the existing contracts from the bus companies, and then pick our kids up after the, and I'll just throw Nottingham out there, do the Nottingham route that they're contractually obligated to do, and then do our routes after that. Obviously, not an ideal situation. It creates a lot of difficulties for everybody. So, but that is an option. The other part of that option would be, it would make it virtually impossible to provide transportation for, for our high school students. Okay, so that, again, that's an issue. And then the third option is, and I don't even see it as an option, is, we don't have transportation. I've looked at everything from coach buses to other bus companies to, I mean, we thought about Uber, and, you know, you name it, we've thought about it. And there's, the bottom line is, there just aren't bus drivers out there, and it's not unique to Northwood. It's throughout the Northeast at least. So those are, those are the discussions that I see it as for the...
...to be said and needs to be understood is, I've got 80 other employees there, and I see somebody getting a $4,500. I'm just going to be a human and say, where's mine?
Right.
So this is not by any means going to go away for a dollar amount. Just saying.
Well, and I think, when and if you do talk to them tomorrow, please let them know that that is an individual...
And then the third option is, is, and I don't even see it as an option, is we don't have transportation. I've, I've looked at everything from coach buses to other bus companies to, I mean, we thought about Uber and, and, you know, you name it, we've thought about it, and, and there's, the bottom line is there just aren't bus drivers out there, and it's not unique to Northwood. It's, it's throughout the Northeast at least. So those are, those are the discussions that I see it as for the...
Be said and needs to be understood is, I've got 80 other employees there, and I see somebody getting a $4,500. I'm just going to be a human and say, where's mine?
Right.
So this is not by any means going to go away for a dollar amount. Just, just saying.
Well, and I, I think when and if you do talk to them tomorrow, please let them know that, that is an individual, and that, that, that the board, if I may speak for the board, the board does not condone, or, you know...
Oh, I, believe me, I don't think that, that, I think they're very upset by what was written and the fact that it was made public, and, and I don't know if the individual got his statistics and his, you know, what he said correct.
He usually doesn't.
But it was, it was taken to heart, and I can tell you, they are very angry, and, and they, they have said, from Tuesday to Wednesday to today, they're not coming. So I just, again, wanted you to know.
Thank you very much, and I don't want to apologize for him, but it's not an apology like that.
Well, no, you, you don't have, you know, it is what it is, and we move on, and, you know, in two weeks from now, there'll be another problem, and that will go away. But these people work hard, and they do a heck of a job, and, and, you know, they don't just get in a bus and look that way and drive and say the heck with what's going on behind them. There's a million things that go on, and, you know, maybe they're not going to retire, maybe they're not going to become millionaires doing it, but they sure as heck care about what they do.
Absolutely.
And they wouldn't do it if they didn't. So understand that, you know, when those kids get on the bus, they're the surrogate parent of all those kids, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion on the table for the, so it's $27,000, if my math was right on my calculator, 4,500 times six, 27,000. A motion on the table for the $4,500 for the six drivers, and I seconded it, so...
Just for my clarification, I know that you had discussed a proration of, of drivers coming in. Did, is, did you want to do that or not?
Yeah, I think that would be more logical for a prorated, for the, for the people that come in, you know, late September, early October, have that prorated from then.
Just what they, did you discuss it at the last meeting? Is that what the proration was at that meeting? No?
Okay.
Okay.
I don't want you to worry about the budget so much, because I think we did have a significant savings in there from Northwood Transportation.
Which I thought we had.
And, so once we get a contract with Dale and we start getting there, and I can see what's encumbered, yeah.
Okay. So what can vote? All in favor? Aye.
I'm going to read Tim's statement, just because it's pertinent to discussion. It's not my statement, but he asked that I read it.
Okay.
So I'm going to read it. Says, "I missed very few meetings, and I am very sorry to miss this one. There are two subjects on the agenda that I would really like to have a say on. First is the bus driver demands. There is a reasonable and righteous time to negotiate a fair and equitable deal. When you have the other side through no fault of theirs on the mat and are grinding their face into it is not. That is bullying. $3,000, twice what is offered by Dale, is very generous. Dale is an example of good people trying to do their best to help a town in trouble. I applaud their professional and businesslike manner in trying to help Northwood work through a very difficult time when we were thrown under the bus, pardon the pun. Their price is very fair. They are the heroes in this sad episode. I sincerely hope that you continue to offer the $3,000 as that is fair. I have said from the beginning and continue to be far more interested in helping new drivers with a hiring bonus than the existing drivers. Also remember that Dale, their other employees, and taxpayers are part of this maelstrom. Tim."
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
We'll be in touch in the morning.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
You too.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is opening public comment. Please state your name and address when you get up to the mic.
I would just like to take a moment to bring some closure to the 10 years that I've spent at Northwood School by reading my letter of resignation.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Sure.
I can't hear you in the back.
Okay. This was dated August 8th, 2017. Dear Jocelyn and Keith, it is bittersweet for me to submit my letter of resignation from my position as a paraprofessional at Northwood School. It has been my pleasure to be a part of the Northwood School community for the past 10 years. I am proud to say that I touched the lives of many children in my roles of district, reading tutor, title one math and reading tutor, title one project manager, and special education paraprofessional. Life is how you handle Plan B, and since my husband Ron had a heart attack on leave day 2016, we've been handling Plan B. Our original five-year plan was to relocate to either the Tucson or Tampa area, to be closer to one of our adult sons and his family. Well, the five-year plan got reduced to a one-and-a-half-year plan after Ron's event. We are headed to Tarpon Springs, Florida, and I will be a teaching assistant at Oak Crest Preschool. I am going back to the age group I taught for 16 years before leaving to work as a paraprofessional here, first at Epsom Central School, and then at Northwood School. I am excited that I will be able to continue one of my life's missions of working with young children, preparing them to be ready to enter kindergarten academically and socially at the end of their pre-K year. Thank you for allowing me to spend 10 years of my career in education that began in 1972 at Central High School in Manchester at Northwood School. I hope that I lived up to the expectations of a paraprofessional at Northwood School, for that is the professional and ethical commitment I made to myself and my profession back in July of 2007, when Ken Darsney, one of Northwood School's former assistant principals, offered me a reading tutor position to support the implementation of treasures during my interview with him, and Judy McGann, one of SAU number 44 superintendents, and Jim Ryan, chair of the Northwood School Board at the time, supported his decision. Sincerely, Linda Royer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] My husband had another arrhythmia, he had to be at the cath lab on Tuesday. His heart's okay, and my sons, well, one of them, two sons, on Tuesday, he's been furiously packing, so...
Good luck.
Goodness, I have good boy issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Linda.
My pleasure, Linda. It's been my pleasure, believe me.
Sir, any other opening comment?
Staff at the breakfast on Tuesday morning.
Steve Ireland, 42 Allen Farm Road. Thank you for working with, on the bus issue. It's something you didn't anticipate, it got thrown at you. I, I would not want to be in your shoes, in all honesty. I hope that this works, I really do. That would be good. Ultimately, I guess if you don't have transportation, you can't start school, really, I think, is what it kind of comes down to, my own two cents. If it, the only other option is later, then that's the only other option. On that note, and we kind of went through this, I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, when the school board tried to reduce a bus, I believe it was for Coe-Brown at the time, from three to two, we kind of went over this with bus routes. And looking at the tentative bus routes that are on the website as of today, just to bring to the board's attention, I don't think everybody was here at that time when I spoke then, there are some things you should be aware of, and you probably are very aware of the state laws on busing and transportation, and that, you know, it does say that you have to provide, the stop has to be in a condition while walking, it's required a distance, it has to be subject to being safe. Okay? And that's, that's a key thing there, and distances. Looking at the bus route right now, I don't know all the routes, all the roads in the town, but what I can tell you is that Route 202A, which is what, there would be three children that would have to walk, I believe a first grader, a third grader, and an eighth grader, would have to walk down to Priest Road, as that is on 202. It's in excess of a mile from all their houses. It's almost a mile and a half from one, it's a mile and a quarter from another. Doesn't comply with that. Additionally, for information for you, traffic volumes on 202A and 202 are in excess of 2,000 vehicles per day, and the federal guidelines on what, how you design a road and how you design sidewalks, et cetera, bring you to, if pedestrians and bicycles are going to be accommodated, then you need to have at least shoulders of a minimum four feet. 202A has no shoulder. 202 has about a one-to-two-foot shoulder, not adequate for the federal standards on that, which is ashtoe. And it does say that any, the standard for over 2,000 vehicles would be an eight-foot shoulder, just so that you're aware, without coming up to Allen Farm Road, picking those children up, they are walking in what would be considered in a professional engineering world, unsafe condition. Okay? I'll leave these with you.
Looks like DOT has a lot of work to do.
I, I totally agree. I would love to see them widen the shoulders, et cetera, but unfortunately, the RSA actually puts it on the school district.
Do we got it?
And that's, that's the problem, because the road is accessible, in fact, it's an easy loop for the bus to do because it is a paved U. They can come in, drive around, they don't have to do a turnaround, any of that, and because it is accessible, and has been for many years, you'd be hard-pressed, I think, to handle that legally. Okay? I'll leave these with you.
My name's Elaine Newberry, and I live on Lake Shore, off of Lake Shore Drive, and we're in the same boat, except our children. We have four kids going to Coe-Brown, and I'm thinking it's approximately six kids to the elementary school from our neighborhood. And they're going to be required to, the bus stop is on Old Dump Road, they're required to walk up or walk down Route 4. The corner where Route 4 is, there isn't even a one-foot area that's been marked off on Route 4. I'm not even sure if it's two feet wide for the kids to be able to walk on. It is dangerous. Some of the parents are talking, well, the high school kids, I'm not too sure about the elementary, are talking about trying to put together some kind of carpool because they can't have their children walking there. It's very dangerous. Route 4, I don't have to tell anybody what the traffic is there, or how people drive past, over the speed limit. The route's just not going to work, so I don't know if people want to send out an email, reach out, find out who is planning on carpooling, if you're even going to need a high school bus for that area. Because everyone I've talked to, they're not going to let their kids walk up Route 4 or walk down Route 4 to get to the bus stop. I've talked to some other parents whose children are starting freshman year, and their bus stop is, they're required to cross Route 4, and their parents aren't, a lot of these parents can bring the child to the bus stop or pick up the child from the bus stop, but they can't do both. Everyone I know can only bring them to the bus stop, they can't bring them home from the bus stop, so it's just, that's not going to work, at least in my area, and I'm not too sure about the elementary school kids. There may be somebody here to speak for them as well.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to say thank you to Dale, and that they should consider what the parents think and what the students think, these bus drivers, because I know that they, they really put up with a lot, the bus drivers do, and the kids and the parents do respect them for everything that they do.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm in the same boat. I live on Route 4. Oh, Christine Nicole. I live on Route 4, and I looked at the draft of what the bus routes are going to be, and my daughter will either have to walk up Route 4 or cross Route 4, and it's very dangerous. Route 4 is just, the bus always stopped at our house, and it's not on the list of stops. So I called and talked to the SAU, and I just wanted to say it again here, that it's dangerous, and I really would prefer them to include my stop again. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name's Ron Adams, I live on Angela Drive. Everybody's in the same situation. It seems like nobody's looked at these roads that these kids have to walk on in the dark, in the rain, in the snow, where people drive and can't see you just because the roads aren't lit, you're in the middle of the woods. They don't drive slow like they're supposed to. It's dangerous. This is a back road. It's posted 25 miles an hour on Sherbin Hill Road. Sherbin Hill Road has rocks growing out of it. I drive around them rather than hope they don't take off the undercarriage of my car. Those roads are not safe. There's no sidewalks. Put a four-foot snowbank on there, and when a car's barreling down on them out of control in the middle of winter, they got nowhere to go. The safety of the kids is what we're concerned about. The bus drives right by my street. It stops at Knowles and comes right up around and goes right back out off a ridge road onto Route 4. Drives right by, sorry, there's only three or four kids, okay? But I wouldn't walk that road. I wouldn't expect anyone to walk that road because it's not safe. And the people that live on that road, if you check with them, will tell you the kind of traffic they have when it's go-to-school time and leave-school time. It's young kids not paying attention, driving down the road with a car full of kids with music blaring, and adults, okay? It's just not safe out there, and I don't understand why, if you're going to provide some transportation for some high school kids and then just not all of them. I don't see how you can do that. If you're not going to do it, don't do it. If you're going to do it, then I don't see how you can pick a select few along a route. I clocked out Knowles Road, 1.2 miles to the school, 1.3 miles up to Angela. So we got to walk all the way down there and risk getting killed, or kidnapped, or whatever. It's isolated, it's dark, no one would know.
Thank you.
I'm concerned for anyone that has to walk around this area because it's rural. This isn't the city where there's sidewalks everywhere, and you can go a mile or two to school. I wouldn't have a problem with that because that's what it stated. You get out on these roads first thing in the morning when it's dark out, or after school when it's dark out, and you're riding it both ways. You're doing morning rush hour, school rush hour, afternoon rush hour, school rush hour. It's not safe.
Thank you.
Christina DiBello, Gulf Road. We have 20 kids on our road who are now being asked to walk over a mile to a boat launch that is not even managed by the state, nor the town of Northwood. There were three stops on that road, and it would be greatly appreciated if it could be reconsidered even to come up to Oakwood, like the Coe-Brown route is listed to do, because at this time, Gulf Road is a very narrow, dangerous road on a regular basis to the point where cars actually have to stop to let other cars pass. So it's really not safe, and these children are from first grade to eighth grade, and eliminating three routes to bring them at the end of the road that's actually Deerfield, not even Northwood, is really unrealistic and dangerous. And then our other concern is the fact that our children will be on a bus for about an hour and arriving to school late. My child needs to have the option to get school through the cafeteria services, so I'm hoping if my child is going to be late, that that is something that is discussed with cafeteria services, because at this time, he's scheduled to get off the bus at 8:02. According to the schedule, which I managed to pull out of a printed handbook, because the website does not currently have the schedule or the handbook on it, because I understand it's under construction, he would be in social studies at 8:05, which does not give him enough time to get off the bus, get his lunch, and get his materials to get to his classroom. So those children need that opportunity to get their breakfast if they're getting breakfast. They need to be safe getting to the bus. This needs to really be looked at, and I appreciate Gail, Dale doing what they're doing, but I don't know how you're going to modify this schedule to encourage the education... But I don't know how you're going to modify this schedule to encourage the education time, when two of your buses are arriving after 8 o'clock. So I'm very concerned as a parent, I'm also very concerned as an educator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginger Dole. Since I don't have any children in school any longer, I figured I'd allow everybody else who did have kids to be able to speak. And we've all heard the issues, and they're the same issues that we've heard year after year, about the safety and whatever. I happen to live on 202, and I know how much traffic there is. When I leave the house in the morning at 7:30, I sometimes have to wait 10 or 15 minutes to pull out of my driveway, because of the amount of traffic coming from the Stratford area. And then it's not always safe, because we've got that hill. That's the same hill that these kids are going to have to come down from Allen's Farm Road, down 202A, go around by my house, and go another half-mile, actually, it's six-tenths of a mile. I clocked it for my granddaughter to run the other night, to get to Priest Road. And then they're going to hang around at the end of Priest Road. I don't remember if the bus turns around at Northwood Market and then picks up at Priest Road, or if they back into Priest Road.
They turn around at Tough Towns, and then I take them off.
Okay, it used to be Northwood Market, okay. Obviously, this is not good. We're in the situation that we're in. I urge the school board and the superintendent, do what you have to do to fix this. It may not have all been the school board's doing, there are lots of different factors involved, but it's got to get fixed. Because the option of not having buses is not an option. Since I do have to drive into Concord, I come by the elementary school, 7:30, quarter of 8, depending on how long it takes to get out of my driveway. And many times, I'm sitting out here for five minutes, because there are so many cars lined up to drop their kids off in front of the school, and then try to get out, because you've got one crossing guard, who's up front, who was letting the buses out. You really need two crossing guards. So you might want to put that on your list of things that you need to consider. One at the entrance, and one to get people out by the fire station. My third comment is, I think you're totally wrong in approving a prorated amount for the two remaining drivers. I suspect that if you're going to have trouble getting the four drivers that we did have, almost ready to go, may not want to do it for the 4,500 under the circumstances. What do you think the chances are of those two people that are in training now, willing to come onboard for less than the 4,500? You guys are in a tough spot. You don't have a lot of choices. You're going to have to bite the bullet, stuff the pride somewhere, and do what you need to do, to get transportation for every kid in this town, and safe transportation. Sorry, that's just the way I see it.
Hi, Stephanie Ireland, Allen Farm Road. I'd just like to make one suggestion for possible consideration, is maybe changing the start time of the elementary school to at least a half-hour later than the high school. That would solve a lot of your issues with scheduling buses. I realize you're cutting stops, because you've got to get everybody with the minimum amount of drivers. But where you have both schools starting and ending within 10, 15 minutes of each other, you don't have time for those drivers to make both routes. So kids are getting to the elementary school late, kids are getting to high school 20 minutes before school even opens, never mind starts. Kids are hanging around for 30 minutes after school, waiting for buses to come back and get them. If you altered those start times and end times a little bit, it might solve some of those problems, where you could have one driver do two routes and not have kids standing and waiting around. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Sarah Laliotis, 62 Knowles Way. I have two comments. First, the option of not having buses, obviously, that's not your end goal. But if you didn't have buses, my kids couldn't go to school, because I don't drive. So that would be, ultimately, I would then have to homeschool, which I really don't want to do. And then my second comment is, I also run the N68 Hours of Hunger program. We have 12 kids in the school alone that rely on our food over the weekend. So if the times are so close, that they might not get to have breakfast, those kids are then going to go a whole nother morning without breakfast. And I just really think that that's something that should also be considered. So that's my two cents.
Anyone else?
I need to ask a question. First off, thank you for trying to resolve this situation. I'm Paul Lucier, I live on Allen Farm Road. I've got three teenagers going to the high school. And, excuse me, having them walk at, during the morning or afternoon, down 202A with traffic, I don't know if you've ever been out there and watched, they come from Stratford, they're doing a lot faster than the posted speed limit. And I've walked my kids to the bus stop when they were coming here, and I've watched this. And there's no sidewalks, like you've been told, and it's just really unacceptable, just like it was the last time we went through this. I know you're trying hard, and don't do a graduated pace scale for them. It would be a slap in the face to those two other drivers. I mean, you know, this is a hard situation, it's no one's fault, it's just the way things happen. But we live out from the main part of the town. And unless you're willing to put in sidewalks, and keep, have an officer there to control the traffic in the morning and the afternoon, then I don't see how I can let my kids walk down to that bus stop for the high school, or even if they were still going here. There's no way. And if something happens to those kids because of that, then there's going to be a real storm happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Adams, again, Angela Drive. We've been mulling this over as well at home, trying to figure out what we can do. And our question also was, is there any chance that Co-Brown can have people or the school open earlier and open later in the day, so that if need be, our kids can be dropped off early, so that we can still fulfill our employer's obligations for work, being there on time, staying through work, and come, I mean, there's times that they have set, and I know what the original, I don't know what they are, but I know the original time schedule for the school opening and closing wasn't within, you know, like, it's like the 6 o'clock range. So has there been any consideration that the kids can stay at the school to be picked up if we need to pick them up? Because we would do that. You know, like somebody said, some people can get their kids to, or some people can get their kids from, but one way or the other, there's an issue of being able to drop your kids off if you have to, which in my case, it would have to, because I won't let her walk on that road. Has this even been explored, and can it be? I'm not asking for daycare service for a high school kid, I'm just asking for a building with some supervision, for the interim that we're talking about, where we'll be back to normal someday. I don't even know what normal's going to be. I don't know if this is all falling under bus troubles or budget cuts. So, I don't know. But I'd like to see if it could at least be explored.
Thank you. Either of you have any comments?
Steve, I have one thing that I just realized, I'm not sure, but I believe there's a Stratford bus that does come down 202A to Co-Brown. That may, I don't know if that could ever be arranged, if there's 10 extra seats, there probably aren't, but if that was something that you wanted to look into as an interim that would help the Luciers, as well as, there are a total of eight high schoolers in Allen Farm. I believe two of which have licenses, but with the graduated license system, they can't necessarily take others with them. So that's part of the problem that you have. So I don't know if that's an option. Stratford does have to come down Bow Lake Road as well to get to Co-Brown, so I don't know if there's students there that would be helped, if there are any open seats on their buses. Maybe that's another short-term interim helpful thing. Good luck.
Do you want to answer any of these questions?
Sure.
Again, I'm not trying to sit here and not answer your questions, this is public comment, not public discussion at this point. But there are a few, I know this is a hot topic.
Can I just say, once he answers the question, that's not, that does not mean that we can get back up to the mic and ask more questions. Public comments closed, I'm just going to allow him to answer some of the questions that have been asked. Sorry.
We've been working on this literally for months, and quite frankly, I agree with everything that everybody said tonight. The problem is that there's such a snowball effect. We've looked at the Stratford buses, we've looked at the times, we've looked at the number of kids on the buses. Stratford has a lot of, they have bus drivers that do double runs, they do the high school, and then they do the elementary school, so they can't use those. And then they have some staff members that drive the bus, so they drive a run in the morning, and then they go to work at the school. So, you know, we've looked at that, we've looked at Nottingham buses coming in, we've looked at Barrington buses coming in, we've looked at group pickup stops, we've looked at safety and the length away from your houses. Every stop that we add, and I hear this a lot from parents, you know, it's just one stop, it goes right by the house. If you add on 20 of those, or 30 of those, then you're backing the bus up. We're trying not to have your children on the bus for any more than 45, 50 minutes. If we have individual stops, we're going to be in the hour 15, hour 20 range. If we back up the start time, we looked at that, we had some kids getting picked up at, I believe it was quarter of 6, so 5:45 in the morning. We have a bunch of lousy choices here, and we're doing the best we can. Initially, we only had three drivers, we did the bus routes with three. That would mean that the elementary kids on the second run, because we'd have to do double runs, would get here at 8:40. When we had the fourth driver, and we reconfigured the routes, and I think those are the ones that are published now, we got the times really close to 8 o'clock, which I was excited about. Not perfect, not great, but we got it back to around 8 o'clock. If we get to the six drivers, then we're going back to what you're normally used to, cutting down on the time that your kids are on the bus, stopping more frequently. We had a lot of bus stops last year that we had talked about kind of reconfiguring the route to go in certain areas. We can't do that with less than six drivers. So I appreciate very much everybody's concern, everybody's feedback. You bring up a lot of wonderful ideas, and we've worked through everything that I've heard tonight and more, and we'll continue to do that. But like I say, I don't disagree with anything that anybody said tonight. We're trying, the bottom line is, we need six buses, and we're going to do everything we can to get there.
Moving on, we're going to do the approval of school board minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from August 3.
Second.
My only thing was that it was a 202, but it says motion passed unanimously. Is that a 202? Is that unanimous?
What was that?
Yeah, it's to abstain.
Yeah, so both of the motions for last, for the approval of both minutes, so it's 46 and 50. They both say passed unanimously?
Yeah, that shouldn't be.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And were there non-public minutes? I don't remember.
Do we have them public?
No.
Okay. And then we will move on to the business administrator's report.
Good evening. My report begins on page 10. I start out giving you an end-of-the-year summary in regards to the general fund. Currently, we are looking at a shortfall of revenues in the general fund of $12,400. I kind of warned you guys about that, the last four months of school, due to Medicaid revenue. And then after that, we are looking at $229,000 in unexpended funds. And I wanted to let you all know that we did receive a check from CAFE Services to reimburse us for their contract of $40,000, just because that needed to hit the fiscal year 17 financials. So we kind of recorded that as a receivable, because we didn't receive it until July, and then we recorded it against that, because it needs to be reflective in the 17 financials. So just so you know, we took that off the cafeteria contracted services line in the financial statements. In regards to the cafeteria, we, I just want to tell you guys more about the $40,000 that we received, and that we've been busy working on closing out the financial statements, so we can wrap up the DOE 25, that's due by September 1st. I don't know if anybody had any questions on the financial statements, before I get into the DOE 25 report that I handed out to you. That's a lovely 30-page document. And I'm so enlightened that everybody's sticking around to listen to my hour spiel on financials. Just a little nervous.
The 229 in unexpended funds is from last year?
No.
From fiscal year 17?
17, yes. So last year.
Does that take out the 90 from?
Nope, I'm going to explain that to you on the DOE report.
Okay.
Because if you'll remember, you guys will have to vote tonight, too, that 2.5 retainage that we do, that amount changed this year, and I brought the tax paperwork in case anybody wanted to see it. So that's going to decrease about $4,000. So I accounted for that on the DOE 25 as well. So typically, I did make some adjustments since these financials that you have in your hands, because these had to go out before I prepared the DOE 25, so there were journal entries that I have to make on our end, to adjust for inventory and certain stuff like that.
Okay. All right. Okay, questions? No? We'll go on to the DOE.
All right, DOE 25. So I'm going to tell you again that I start backwards on this report. Basically, while you're looking at the report, if you look at the top of the titles, it says page, line, and account number. So when I'm referring to a page and a line number, that's where it's going to be. Okay? So just to start you guys off, basically, I start on page 19. Your beginning fund equity balance, that is your ending balance from last year. So we take that amount from the report that we filed with the DOE last year, and that gets input into that line. And you'll see it's broken out by your general fund, your food service fund, and your trust funds. We then go on to record your revenue and your expenditures, and then it gives you your total fund equity as of June 30, 2017. Okay? And just so you guys understand, basically, what I do is I work backwards. So I have to make journal entries in regards to the trust funds, because I have to record any expenditures, any revenue that they received for the year, as well as interest income. Your trustee of the trust fund that I deal with, he's very quick at emailing me those, so that worked out pretty well. And then in regards to the food service, basically, what we want your total fund equity at the end of the year to be, we kind of need that to be your ending inventory balance. So if you look at that, that's what's going to be on page 1, when we get to that page. Okay? So then, if we move forward to page 2. Page 2 is where I start breaking out your revenues. Okay? So you can see on page 2, line 1, account number 1111, there is $7.3 million that we received from the current appropriation, which is what we received from your taxpayers. Page 3 goes on to break out your earnings of investments, your food service sales, and your rentals, and your other income.
Rentals being the?
Preschool. Preschool, yep. And if you have an after-school program, that will typically get included in there as well. And then sometimes you rent out your building for the gym, or whatever, all of that gets lumped into there. Okay, page four is your adequacy aid grant and your statewide enhanced education tax. Now, all of this information is broken out on your revenue statement. But the state also sends us a page that breaks out your adequacy, your statewide, your school building, your CAT aid, Medicaid, all that information. So, I make sure that our revenue statement agrees to theirs before I move further. So, if you do take a minute to compare this to your revenue statement, your statewide enhanced education and your current appropriations from page two, you would want to add those together because that's what we record on the revenue statement for the current appropriations. Page five goes on to discuss the amount that we received from Medicaid distributions as well as child nutrition from the federal government. Page six is, we transferred $11,227 from the general fund to the cafeteria this year. I did review that. Last year, it was $35,000. I know we did sign a contract with Cafeteria Services saying that we wouldn't go over a certain amount, but you do have other expenses in the cafeteria that they are not accountable for. You have your propane, your free and reduced salaries that we have for the person to do that paperwork, as well as the FICA. There were equipment repairs that had to be done. And then when I adjust the inventory at the end of the year, for the inventory to agree to the paperwork that they give me in the cafeteria, that has to be offset against your food milk line. Because that's what the inventory is. So, there's got to be some kind of offset for that there. And you'll also see the $90,000 from the transfer from the general fund that we did last year once we closed the financial statements. Okay. That wraps up the revenue. Page seven through nine goes on to break out your elementary versus your high school expenditures. If you do look at these against your financials, they will all agree to them except for lines 2,300 and 2,700. That's your administration for the school board and for the SAU under 2,300. And that's because we, so you guys just have one line in your financial statements for it. We go back and we break it down by the enrollment report for the end of the year. So, I distribute, I don't remember what the percentage of was off the top of my head, but so like, say it's like 72 and 28%. So, 72 would be elementary and 28 would be high school. Because our services do account for the high school as well. And then your 2,700 is your transportation. And we break that out on the financials anyway. So, page seven is the elementary. Page nine is your high school. On page 10, that's when we account for your bond payments, your principal and your interest. And then it also wants it to be shown right there, your trust fund agencies and your food service transfer. So, all in all, when you're looking at this report, all of those figures I just gave you tie into the page 19. And that's why I start with 19 first. If you go to the end of the report, on page 24, it's a protected Excel spreadsheet. I can only enter information from what I have. If there is an error, you would see it on page 24 because that's their checks and balances. I can't submit that to them unless all of those are zero. And I'll wrap it up with page one, where it's pretty much breaking out your balance sheet accounts. And you can see at the bottom, I have recorded for the reserve for amounts voted, that was $60,000 this year. And your unassigned fund balance retained, last year, I believe, is about 215. This year, we need to bring it down to 211,363. Because that goes off of your net assessment. Do you need that again, Suzanne? Okay. Yes or no? 211,363.
I got it.
Do you want a motion to do that now so we don't forget?
If we could, if they're all set with it, or if anybody has any questions.
What do we have to motion?
You can do less than the 211,363. That's the two and a half. But you can't do more. And you were, you had more than that.
You had more. So, typically, when the auditors come in, they look to see that there was a vote taken. Last year, I believe, we voted to increase it. I believe it was like $1,200.
We can't increase it, you just said.
You can't go, last year, it adjusts every year.
Yep. By your net assessment.
And this year, what you can do for 2.5% is 211,363.
And I just kind of want to vote on it because technically, you could go lower than that. You could say you only want to retain 150.
So, this retention, is this the same as what we talk about at the joint board level, having that money there for when?
It's a little different because at the joint board level, you can retain, you can carry money over year after year without the 2.5%.
No, but this is, we use this the same way, is what I guess is my question.
This 2.5 retention is set aside for emergencies only. So, you can utilize it to offset taxes if you choose to do that, or you can choose to utilize it for an emergency. If, let's say the bus driver situation came out to put your budget over at the end of the year, then you could request the commissioner to consider allowing you to use that 211 to offset that. So, yes, that's where that would come from.
But that's not adding to something else. It's not like we have, you know, $50,000 or something sitting there. This is just for this year.
No, this past year, you had two, what was it, 216?
215.
215, 216, maybe 216.
It's just an adjustment from what you can legally put in there. So, it would be adjustment down to 211.
Okay. Motion to put 211,363 in the retained balance? Is that what the motion is?
Second.
Discussion? So, in doing that, the unassigned fund balance, the 17705, that's what we're returning to the taxpayers?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we could, like, the max is a 2%, so we could make it 2.2% if we wanted.
Yep.
Yep.
There is another district in our district that their warrant article to get it passed was 1.5. They have not retained enough to get to the 1.5. They're comfortable where their balance is right now.
For a number of years, Northwood has been doing the 2.5. And just adjusting it to that every year.
I want to say this is like the possibly fifth year you guys have been doing it.
I'm good.
Okay. We haven't voted yet. No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, nothing.
So, that's the DOE 25. There's a separate stack behind that. That's the MS 25. That one is just a link from this one. I have not input anything in here. It's just condensing it for the DRA. I do review it and it does agree. But that's what that report is. I emailed you all today as soon as this was finished, because this is the fastest, I think, we've had to get it done because your meetings are early this month. But the report is due September 1st. I will need signatures. I emailed it all to you in case you wanted to review it yourself and see how it works. We do have a joint board meeting on June 20, June, August 28th. So, I will have them there if you guys are not comfortable signing it tonight. And then if you're not going to be at the joint board meeting, if you could let me know and possibly come by and sign it at some point at the main office. And I will leave it there for you at the front desk.
I'll probably send it to the joint board.
Do you want to wait to sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
That way, I'm very comfortable with that because it gives you guys time to review it. Same thing with Nottingham last night. I didn't get theirs. Emailed to them until 2:00 in the afternoon, so.
Any other questions for Marjorie? Seeing none, didn't hear it.
I just want to put a plug in for Marjorie and her business office. This time of year, especially working on the MS 25 and the DOE 25, going through those, bouncing from Nottingham to Northwood to Stratford and then the financials, it's tough to do, so they do a great job.
Kudos.
Thank you.
Thanks. Glad somebody likes numbers.
I don't like them this time of year.
And we are ready for the principals' report.
Good evening.
Oh, no, I just said that. Can we let her go? Sorry. Then you said that.
Okay, I'm going to take a review of the manifest so I can drop them off because I know your treasure is going to be in early tomorrow morning. So, I'm going to drop them off tonight.
Our report begins on page 21. I will try to keep it brief. We continue to interview for open positions. Dr. Godomsky will have a couple of nominations later on. In terms of the speech pathologist, we've not received any applicants recently. And so, Mr. Rooning has arranged to contract with a company that will provide a speech-language assistant rather than a pathologist. So, she'll be supervised adequately and then Kelly Brown will do the evaluations. In terms of preparing for opening days, another plug for our teachers. Don't ever let anybody tell you that Northwood teachers don't work hard because the vast majority of them have been in the building multiple days in the last couple of weeks, setting up their classrooms, meeting with parents already, getting together and co-planning with their colleagues, you know, orienting new staff. New staff have been in as well. So, lots is going on already. Joyce and Donna are working hard in the office. Tom and his short crew have been working very hard. Steve has been setting up smart boards and getting in new computers. One of the new smart boards is actually right behind you. That went up today. And then Adrian and Steve and I will welcome our new staff members on Monday for a short technology and sort of general question and orientation on Monday morning. Yesterday, Steve and Melissa Moore, Michelle Alifat, and Kim Clemens provided professional development to 18 teachers and paraprofessionals on various technology aspects. That was funded through Title II. I provided the schedule for our opening days. We will eat well. So, the first day has a lot of time for classroom preparation. That is a contractual obligation. We'll have a staff meeting and then some team time at the end of the day for teams to work together to finish getting ready for kids to come. Because then on Wednesday, we are very full pretty much all day with Pete Hall, who will be our guest speaker for the day. On page 22, there is a school board policy that requires that the superintendent and principal develop rules for retention. I couldn't find anything about retention, so I don't know when it was last done. So, Dr. Godomsky and I sort of begged, borrowed, and stole from other schools to develop this. So, basically, it will be a team decision that involves the parents throughout the process so that there's not, you know, ultimately, it will be my decision, but there's a lot of measures in place for people to have input, people to ask questions, review of data, trying interventions, and using the light's retention scale. So, we are looking for the board's approval for those tonight, and I welcome any questions on that. And then I did update both handbooks, more the faculty handbook than the student one, which I wasn't expecting to do. But then, once I really got into it, I started looking back at all of the sort of memos I had issued over the course of the year and thought, rather than issue those separately, again, why not put them all in one place? So, I tried to indicate substantive changes in italics. I may have missed some. It was not like I was trying to get away with anything. It's just they're big documents. So, I did try to indicate those. So, we are looking for approval of the handbooks as well, with the obvious caveat that as staffing changes, we will need to update them. And then Adrian has one additional thing to add.
Hi, everybody. So, recently, I was at the dentist. This is going to be an odd story. And while I had some time to sit in the dentist's chair, I was pondering a lot of things for school. And one thing that came to mind is that I obviously have a love for school, hence the position I'm in. And now we have full-day kindergarten, so we should get our kindergartners excited to be here. It's their first real taste of education. So, when I was done and notified by my dentist that I'm part of the adult no cavity club, he threw out that, you know, as being part of that, I could get bagels and coffee for my staff. And I went, well, that's great. I'm actually interested in donations. So, on top of that, I asked him if they'd be willing to donate some money to creating, like, a, I guess essentially, a Northwood, like, welcome to Northwood bag for kindergartners to get. And he said, that's absolutely something I'd be interested in. And so, I wrote a proposal to them and they said, yep. And then I asked for what I thought was a fair-sized amount of money, and they didn't blink an eye at it. I said, absolutely. So, I have, did you pass that around already?
I did.
Ah, so I have the little bag that I created, and that's going to be full of crayons, and pencils, and a book, and erasers, and yada, yada. And it has our new logo on the front of it that we're going to provide to all the kindergartners this year. It might not be exactly on time, as this epiphany came to me as I had Novocain in me, but, so hopefully, I can get that expedited here and get those to the kids in the first week. And then hopefully, from there on out, we'll have a great partnership with them and I will keep funding them as well. And, yeah, we can keep that rolling because it's important to excite those kids to want to be here to learn, and that's something they can kind of hold on to, so.
Motion to approve the $500 donation from J.D. Howard Dental in Dover.
Second.
Anything? No?
Nope.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
3-0.
Dentist for Adrian.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm sure that my mouth has also funded that. I certainly, I certainly will.
You could have lost more than.
I'm sure there'll be more to come.
So, we just need, so approval status of retention rules. So, we just need to make a motion to approve the retention rules. Is that what you're looking for?
That is what the policy suggests.
Yes.
So moved.
Second. Questions, concerns, discussion? Seeing none? Vote, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
3-0. Then the handbooks? Do you want them separately or can we do them together?
Together would be great.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Vote, yes? Yes? 3-0 on both the handbooks. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the monthly enrollment is in here?
Yeah, the monthly enrollment on pages 96 and 97, obviously a snapshot. We never really know how many we're going to have until we open the doors. And that's coming soon. So, obviously, your September and October enrollment is usually when it stabilizes a little bit and we get a more accurate number.
They've been coming in in droves in the last week and a half.
Yeah, I was going to say because it's, 365, we were 387 at the end of last year. I know that was a big class last year, eighth graders.
Yes.
It was.
Yeah.
It was like 57 or something.
It was one of the bigger ones. It's like these loops coming through. Questions on the enrollment? Nope. Seeing none? We'll move on to policies. Do you want to present these, Brian?
I can. We have two policies coming back for second reading, so those are ready to go. We have seen them already, the sexual harassment policy and the use of child restraint policy. It's JBAA and JKAA.
Okay, I got JJH. Is that a first reading up?
That was a first reading, yeah. So, I was doing the ones that were ready first.
JBAA.
Yep.
And JKAA. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And you just took what was recommended policy, right, the states?
Mm-hmm.
Did we add or subtract anything now? Does it all feel good?
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3-0.
And then we have the one for first reading for the interscholastic program. That is new. This policy, JJH.
So moved. Take that into first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything else? Oh, the job description ones. Do we vote on those? I'm not even sure. Out of those, just.
It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah. Okay, we can move those for interscholastic coach and athletic director.
Second. Are so moved.
Four seconds. Whoever said it. Doesn't matter.
I think the only thing we changed in the athletic director one was to remove and-spring sports. Says all winter sports instead. Other than that, no change.
Questions? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, nothing. And those were the two, right? Yep, okay. Moving on, superintendent's report.
All right, I'll start on page 122, your personnel report. First, we have resignation of Barbara Spatafora as next tutor, and Linda Royer resignation as para-professional.
Motion to accept the resignation of Barbara Spatafora and Linda Royer with regret. And I thank you to Linda for her 10 years of service at Northwood School. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry.
The next is a nomination of Karen Brown as curriculum director. We feel pretty strongly that we're fortunate to have her on board. We had an administrative retreat with all three districts about a week and a half ago, and she attended that with us, so that was nice to see. So bringing nomination of Karen Brown as curriculum director.
So moved. Anyone want a second?
Yep, second.
Discussion?
I have a note from Tim that I promised to read as well. It's a little shorter. This one that says, "I would have liked to let, I would have liked to let Northwood know that I support them and vote no to the full-time curriculum director nominee. Seventy-one percent, more than two to one, said no. I do too."
Good for you.
But his vote doesn't count tonight.
Nope.
So not. More discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Two, one, zero. Motion passes.
Okay, and the rest on 122 and 123, you'll see stipends for your information. Kimberly Clemens, eighth-grade advisor. Louise King, MeraVista coordinator. Sharon Plourd, building leadership meeting. Nicole Billcliff, leadership meeting. Julie Doran, leadership meeting. Linda McDonald as well, leadership meeting. Sarah Hashem, leadership meeting. And Ellen Gibson, leadership meeting as well.
Is this in the last meeting?
That's already been done.
It was in, it was going, okay.
Yeah, that's already been done. And then, under separate cover, I hand it out to you, one more personnel. And that is, I hope I don't mess up his last name, Kader?
Sean Kader, and it's a she.
Sorry. Sean Kader, special ed para-professional.
So moved. Second. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I believe that's all I have for you tonight.
A new business? I have nothing under there. Committee reports. Wasn't there something in here from?
Yes, the CIP plan.
Oh, is that the?
So. Facilities met? Week ago? A little more than a week. Yeah, a little more than a week ago. And we came up with a large list of what would need to be touched in the next five, 10, 15 years. And we definitely came up with a large different, large numbers of different things like, you know, things from the boiler, paving, freezers, stuff like that, and as you can see on the list. And then we had Tom go out and find out if he had previous bids, or go and find bids, or estimates, not bids, because we haven't really put it out yet, on how much it exactly would cost. So we would kind of know how much per year it would cost when we start developing our CIP. And I think we got pretty much all of it, correct? That, pretty much all the estimates?
Yeah, we've got, obviously, some of those are ballpark figure. You look at the roof at $340,000. This roof is sectioned off, and that's in 2025, so, you know, that's really a ballpark figure at this point. But it's in as a place marker. But the rest of them, you know, 2018, a lot of those are really pretty good, tight numbers. And if the, if the board is comfortable in what you see, the year you've got it under, all of those things, with your approval, I'll bring it to Joe Gunter, the town administrator, so they can start putting it together with the town's CIP as well.
There are no dollar amounts for computer replacements after 2022. What's that about? Are we not going to replace computers for a few years?
Yeah, we're all done. No.
Yeah, right?
They come up.
Now, we, we just put it with our five-year technology plan. So if we go out more than five years on our technology guesses, it would really be a guess at this point.
There's nothing on the paving for the back?
Well, there isn't, no.
Nope, I don't have any estimate on that.
So, and maybe this is part of the CIP, I don't understand it enough, but something like this $340,000 for the roofing, can't we do what we've been doing with the trusts or whatever they're called, and say to the townspeople, in 2025, we want to do, we need to do our roof? And each year from unexpended funds, instead of coming up with the money in like $340,000 to put that in our budget in 2025?
Yeah, the other.
Like part of it, or whatever.
The other part of a capital improvement plan is, once you get everything put together and you see what the town is looking at in the next five to 10 years, what the school district is looking at in the next five to 10 years, then the next conversation is, how do you fund this? You know, is it a, is it a bond where you pay for it all in one lump sum? Do you start capital reserves and put a little bit aside each year? Do you utilize unexpended funds at the end of the year? Do you put it into your general budget? Those are all conversations along the way, and you're probably going to, you know, if you look at all of these things, you're probably going to use all of those funding tactics. You know, some of them, like computer replacement, $14,800, you may choose to just put that in your general budget.
Right.
Obviously, if you look at 34, $340,000 for replacement cost for a roof, you're not going to put that in your general budget. That's usually going to come out of a capital reserve or a bond or something like that. So that's the reason why you do a capital improvement plan in the first place, so you can plan those things out.
I don't know, a lot of things, like you said, to 2018, are going to be something that's going to be presented in the budget. Like, for example, we talked about lockup replacement this year.
Yep. And, you know, you, this is, this is a, this will give you, once we get it together with the town, it'll give the town a pretty good snapshot on what you're looking at in the next 10 years. Now, obviously, you know, you may, at the end of the year, look at some things in 2018 and 2019 that become top priority, and you may pull them back. Or you might say, you know, something like the, the, I don't know, the boiler or something like that. You may get to where you've got it in your CIP and think, it's doing fine, it's in great shape, we don't need it yet, we're bumping that out another five years. So it's a fluid plan. I mean, it's, obviously, anytime you're looking at 10 years out, every year, you know, the, the next year is going to be real close and tight, and then as you go out, obviously, it's a little bit of a guess.
Can you clarify the one item that says office engineer study? What does that mean?
We had talked about the, what was it, last year or the year before, reconfiguring, a couple of years ago, reconfiguring the office, because the office in this building is a little bit strange because you've got two entryways. Reconfiguring it, so there's, it's shut off a little bit more, it's a little bit more contained for people coming in, a vestibule, buzzer. And this, this would just be for the engineering study to get somebody in to do different plans and configurations for that.
So even though they don't have amounts on them, the bleachers and the paving of the back, those are in, that's why they're on here, is because it would be part of it? What about the gym floor and just the general floors in the building? I know the gym floors were brought up because the floors are.
Well, that came, that came up at the facilities committee meeting and.
And Tom, the tiles on the floor can be replaced. There's no reason to have to rip up a whole floor. Once a tile goes, you replace the tile.
Okay.
Same with the ceilings, because we discussed that. And the gym floor, as long as you're maintaining it, it should last.
Okay.
And we talked about windows, we talked about lighting. I think we were pretty inclusive with what was discussed.
Great. And does anyone know, actually, I meant to ask Mr. Wolf the other night when I was at the budget committee meeting, and then I forgot, if we are on the agenda at all for, I think Joe's here. Are we on the agenda? We are? Okay, thank you.
The end of September?
The end of September?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. So yes, do you need a vote, or just that, yeah, go ahead and send this to Mr. Gunter?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I necessarily need a vote because you're not really committing, spending any money.
Right.
If you're comfortable with what it is, I mean, it's a fluid document, you're going to be revisiting all the time, so. With that, I'll, I'll get it to Joe, and he can start putting it together with the town.
Okay, sounds good. We did the transportation parking lot items.
CIP plan can come off?
The cafeteria ceiling could probably come off too, because that's now part of our CIP. Okay?
Meeting with selectmen, we have that. Domination, oh.
We have eighth-grade advisor.
Oh, yeah, that was just in here, wasn't it? Yeah. It was like, I thought we had that. Public hallway steps, that will go later in the front entryway. Good. Lunch rest day. We voted on that amount, right, for the lunch? Okay, update on summer maintenance, we got that. List of teacher workshops, we've got that. Update on expended, yeah, contact unions, yeah, we don't have to do that.
That's true.
Yeah, couldn't go.
I like it. So just for September, school board policy books to teacher and staff unions, and support staff unions, review of board goals, annual parent notification of release of directory information, discuss budget preparation and budget development, and then we have the lockers in there, but we can probably take that off too because that's on our CIP.
Yep.
Good. Anything else to take off or add to the timeline or the parking lot? School board timeline? Is that the future agenda?
That's the draft, the kind of stuff you just went over.
Oh, the timeline, sorry, okay. And set future agenda items? Do we have anything?
Let's see here. We've got, obviously, a transportation update. We've got policies coming back. They're not, you're in pretty good shape.
You said discuss board goals was one?
Yeah, review of board goals.
Didn't we just do that?
That was a couple of months ago.
That.
Paper, and I thought we set those, but then, and you brought it back to us.
Yeah, just to review them, though, just to make sure.
Yep, we can do that. We'll put it in for review.
And then discuss budget preparation. I'm not, budget development, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, budget development is going to start going on almost every agenda as we go forward now.
Just for the board.
It's that time of year.
So start thinking about what we want our bottom line to be.
It's that time of year.
And future meetings, August 28th is a joint board meeting at 6:15 at the SAU. September 7th, regular board meeting here at 6:30. September 21st, a regular board meeting here at 6:30. September 25th, 6:15, joint board meeting. And then sometime at the end of September, we're meeting with the selectmen. You don't know the date, Joe, do you?
Fourth Tuesday.
The fourth Tuesday? Which is, I guess I'll have to put that on there, too. You have it?
That would be the 26th?
One, two, three, four, the 26th, yes, September 26th. Because the joint board meeting, I was looking at that as the, okay. Closing public comments?
Couple of things. First of all, on the transportation update. Again, I don't have kids, but for those that are still here, is there any plan or ideas as far as how and when parents will be notified the results of continued negotiations and attempts to find drivers? How will parents know whether or not there's a bus available for them to even consider allowing their students to walk to a stop versus, well, I guess I'm homeschooling for a few weeks versus, well, I guess I've got to try and drop them off? These are, we've got a week to go, and I know you're aware that there's a time gap, but I think these people would kind of like to know, I'm speaking for you, sorry, how and when they would get notification. And especially for those that don't have internet. You know, it's, it's easy to say, well, keep checking the website. I was just wondering if you've thought of it yet, and if not, would you please think about how you're going to go about letting everybody know? The other thing in regards to the budget prep, I don't remember if you are at the end of a negotiation year for either para or their continuous contract, so you don't have to do negotiations this year.
We have a two or three year.
Wonderful. So that just leaves the budget prep to get ready for budget committee because as past years, we'll be looking at the second Saturday, to the best of my knowledge, for the school, to do the, the, first, let's see what we can get done day. Obviously, we'll need the information prior to that. That's all. Thank you.
Second Saturday of?
December.
Any second Saturday.
That's soon.
I say that, let me rephrase that. I say that now, there was a request at our last budget committee meeting, I don't know if you heard it, Barbie, but some people requested that we start before Thanksgiving. We did not take a vote on that. It'll be something we'll discuss at our October meeting. My sense is, no, we will not be starting before Thanksgiving because that's cutting it much, much shorter. Town and school don't have enough time to get a strong handle on figures, especially the school 18 months in advance. So my sense is that will not happen, but.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that. Do we need a non-public?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion?
To adjourn?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.